Hello Vivian.
Yes.
Will this recording be made available for members of the public who cannot make this meeting time?
I'm sure it can be. What I'll do is I'll save the recording and it'll be loaded into our database. So I'm sure if you have, if you have access to, if you look up anything in, in our N-Gem system, it will be in there as an attachment. It will be a link. So I'm sure you have, will have access to it just like anything else when you look up stuff on the DEP, on the outside of the portal.
Great. Thank you.
And if for some, you're welcome, and for some reason you can't access it, just let me know and I can send the link to you. The last virtual hearing I did, no one had a problem accessing it. So it should be, it should be okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm going to start with the opening statement for today. Good morning. This public hearing is being held for the pending request for a partial release of conservation restrictions, of environmental restrictions by MNT at Lacy LLC on property identified as block and lots 739, 7.02, 739.01, 2.06, 739.01, 2.07, 739.01, 7.03, and 739.01, 7.04 within Lacy Township Ocean County. My name is Vivian Finelli and I am the project manager for this application with the Division of Land Resource Protection at the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. I am also the hearing officer today. Today, we are providing an opportunity for public comment on the request to partially lift multiple deed restrictions submitted to the Division of Land Resource Protection for partial lifting of tree planting, forest preservation, critical wildlife habitat, and freshwater wetlands, transition area, existing conservation easements that were recorded as a result of activities previously authorized at the project site. On June 29th, 2004, the division approved a CAFRA individual permit, file number 1512-02-0007.1, for the construction of a commercial retail office center consisting of retail office buildings with associated parking and an access roadway. The authorization also included disturbance of freshwater wetlands and transition area for construction of a road crossing and stormwater outfall structures and the reduction compensation of transition areas. The department is considering the partial release of the deed restrictions to allow for new development. This hearing is to obtain supplemental information and comments from the public on this request. As such, no decision has yet been made regarding this request to release the conservation easement. If you wish to speak, please use the raise hand feature on the Microsoft Teams application. If you are joining by phone, please wait until prompted and we will accept your remarks. Please be advised that this hearing is being recorded for the department's use and to memorialize the public record. Please note that this hearing is neither an adversarial proceeding nor a contested case hearing. Persons who speak will not be sworn as a witness and cross-examination will not be permitted. The department may not be responding to questions today. The legal and technical complexity of the issues raised and our need to allow time for all who wish to comment might make it impractical to answer questions in this forum. However, the department will consider all comments and questions in its review of this transcript of this hearing. Where your concerns or comments are not clear to us, we may ask for clarification so that we can best consider your comments as we review this application. We appreciate you taking the time to come here today. Please focus your comments on this project as only relevant comments will be considered in our review process. Should anyone have insufficient time to address issues or think anyone, or should anyone think of additional issues after the close of the hearing, you may submit your comments in writing until September 23rd, 2021. For speakers, when your name is called, please state your name and spell it for the benefit of the recording. Okay. I don't see any of the, does everyone see where the raised hand request is that you would like to speak? So I know who to call on? It looks like a little smiley face with a hand. Up there, there is one.
On the toolbar at the bottom of the screen.
Yeah, on my end, it just shows the person as guest. So if you would like to speak, there's one person that has a raised hand. If you would like to provide your comments, you can start, just start with your, providing your name, please.
Yes. Good morning Vivian. This is Helen Henderson, 5 Camelot Court, Lenoka Harbor. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
I'm good. Thank you. Is there going to be any type of presentation for members of the public who may not have received adequate information to know even what this hearing is about?
No, we don't typically provide a presentation for the hearing. If anyone has, if they have comments, I addressed what the hearing was in reference to in my comments. It's regarding the partial lifting of previously recorded conservation easements. If you would like to present comments on, in particular to any of, to that process, you can submit comments or you can submit something in writing. Or if you have comments on the, or would like to request an over request for the application, you can do that as well.
Yes, understood. I, I did communicate with DEP and did receive some supplemental information, which was quite helpful for myself personally, and I will submit written comments by the 23rd. I just know that the notices, I'm a 200-foot property owner notice on this application and I know many, you know, neighbors in the area were questioning what, even what this hearing is about. I think, as you know, it's really hard for the general public to understand, especially when an application has been back and forth for 20 years. That said, I just have a general, it's really a question more than a comment, but if you could verify the lifting of the deed restrictions is for a prior permit ending in 007 dot 1. So this is a new application or is there a breakdown of where the conservation calculations are coming from in terms of the acreage of each of the lots? And are those existing previously restricted areas being compensated for on the original application?
There's a, there is that application that was, I don't know how, how much detail to provide. Janet and I are looking at each other how to respond.
I mean, do I need to clarify? I'm just, I understand the current lifting that's happening. I'm just wondering if there is compensation for that previously approved? Because you're taking areas away that were already required for preservation. So I'm trying to figure out if these new calculations take into consideration the, you know, what needs to be required there as well.
They are, the new plan provides compensation areas for, at a rate, at a ratio of four to one. So yes, the new application, if we're lifting previously recorded areas, but they're providing at a ratio of four to one, an increase to what is being lifted. And that's, that's part of the pending application.
And the, what are they basing the impervious coverage on? Is that this new application or it includes also the prior application?
We would only be looking at impervious for this new application.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Is there any information that you could provide on the, there was a land bank referenced where the proposed compensation is taking place. I believe it was called Magnolia Land Bank. Can you provide information on that?
I think at this point, yeah, I think at this point, if, if you have specific questions regarding the project, it would be best to put those questions in writing. This is more fact-finding and providing your comments because of the time and the amount of people that potentially would like to speak. I would suggest putting it in writing and then also addressing, I believe Paul and Shaw, the agents are both on. It's information that they can also provide to us. So I would, I'm going to say, any questions regarding impervious or land bank or any mitigation questions, any questions at all, provide in writing and then we can provide a formal response.
Great. Couldn't you confirm Sean and who Sean and the other person is that you referenced?
Sean Martin and Paul Latham, they're the agents on behalf of the applicant.
Oh, okay. Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? I don't see any requests to speak. So if, if you would like to speak, just make sure you unmute yourself before you start talking and then just announce yourself. Helen, is that, I believe, is that your hand still up from the guest speaker? I believe it is. I just want to make sure I'm not missing anyone. Yes. Okay. It looks like she may have left.
Hi, I'm sorry. I'm dialing in. My name is Courtney Summers and I also am a resident on Camelot Court.
Okay. Would you like to provide comments?
Yes, I guess. So I don't understand basically anything that has been mailed to us in regards to, I guess, what you guys are proposing is going over in the area. It's just very confusing for somebody that doesn't deal with this stuff on a regular basis. So I don't, I guess, is there a way that you guys can provide us more information in like layman's terms? So that we can understand it better?
Sure, I can do a brief overview. They were, the applicant MNT was issued a permit, a CAFRA individual permit for the, for the develop, for a development in 2004. Part of that development was encroaching in special areas that required them to deed restrict certain areas of those, of the special areas. As part of that, they, those deed restrictions were filed and recorded. Fast forward to current, they, over the years, additional develop has occurred and they've proposed different types of development and nothing, nothing was built until now. They have come in recently, they came in for new development and during the review of that development, the division, based on information that we have found, realized that they were, that the most recent proposed development would be encroaching in those deed restricted areas. And deed restricted areas are legally binding, preventing development within those recorded areas. So as part of that development, they have to, the department offers partial and full lifting of deed restriction, deed restricted areas. However, you have to demonstrate that it's in the public need and that it's, that you're providing more restricted areas than what you were previously required to provide. So this hearing is, they would like to, they are proposing to deed lift, partial, partially lift those previously recorded areas to allow for this current development. But before that can be done, the public hearing process must commence and then the public has the opportunity to speak. So this hearing is addressing that the potential, the department's potential consideration of partially lifting some of those deed restricted areas.
Okay, I understand that. And I, I guess as a concern, just in, you know, obviously being a resident in that direct area, I mean, deed restricted, is that like protected lands and things of that nature is like kind of what you're talking about?
Yes. The deed restricted areas that they're considering, the, the areas that were impacted previously were forest preservation areas, critical wildlife habitat, freshwater wetland transition areas and tree planting areas. And they, the deed restrictions were formally recorded and filed. So now to do anything in those areas, they, legally, they cannot do anything in those recorded areas. So this process allows them to lift portions of those previously recorded areas, give us additional areas that I previously mentioned at a four to one ratio. So they're giving us four times the amount that was previously required. Put those recorded areas somewhere else to allow development in those previously recorded areas.
So where else are those, like, so are you saying that those areas are still in, like that they're giving us back so that it's equal and that we have, like four times more? So is that in the same area as, or vicinity of what that land is now? Or is that like somewhere totally different?
Some is onsite and some will be offsite.
So are we allowed to know like the percentage of onsite? Because obviously like we want to keep as much land as possible. I mean, at least me personally, I would like to see as much land as possible stay there and not be moved somewhere offsite. I don't, I'm sorry, I don't understand what offsite means either.
That's fine. What you can do is if you would like to submit that as a formal comment and a request, we can, we can provide a formal response to that question, providing more detail.
Okay, okay. So you guys can't necessarily disclose to me at this time where those compensation, compensated areas that will be protected will be.
No, the, the public hearing is really just to take information, have the public, have, provide the public the opportunity to speak and then formally written comments are, are accepted after the hearing. And then that's when we can provide a formal response to any questions you have.
Okay. Um, I guess my only other question right now is like, is, is there somebody from like our actual town that's part of this? So that like somebody from Lacy Township that's part of this meeting, so they kind of know what's going on too? Or are they not involved?
The township received, they received the initial copy of the application. They're noted, they, they are notified that the here, that the public hearing was taking place, but they're, I don't believe that they joined the call. And the applicant is required to update the township as to when, as far to, as far as the notification process. So they know, they are aware that this is going on, but they're not required to be part of the hearing process.
Okay. And then I guess my last thing, just because I, again, I'm not, this is very like formal and this is not our typical like world, you know, you guys, this is what you guys do. I mean, I don't know, I don't want to be inappropriate, but I mean, if I'm commenting, I'm not, like from what I can understand from the map or plans that were sent to us, I'm not happy. I don't want this ginormous buildings there as well as other things. And again, if this is inappropriate for me to say, go ahead and stop me. But I'm speaking for myself. You know, we have parks and all this gorgeous land right around that area. I have a three-year-old and, you know, the amount of traffic that this is going to bring in and just the fact of, you know, that you guys are giving up land that animals and birds and habitat are in is, is kind of upsetting as well. So I don't know if that's inappropriate to say, but I, I'll speak for myself in saying that, like myself and my family, we are not happy that this is happening.
That's not inappropriate and that is exactly what the public hearing is for, to allow the public to provide comments and feedback regarding what's being proposed.
Okay. Thank you. I mean, thank you for hearing me. I don't, you know, I, I'll try to figure out. So from this point on, like you're saying to submit comments, I need to basically like draft a letter to you guys?
It can be an email. I believe my email was provided in the notice. It can be an email. It doesn't have to be a formal letter. Yeah, an email is perfectly fine if that's what's easier for you.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be a formal letter mailed in. It can simply be an email.
All right. Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. It just says guest, so I'm not sure what your name is. I apologize if you would like to provide comments.
It's Helen Henderson again.
Hi Helen.
Hi. I was just hoping you could provide your email via this public hearing. I, I don't, I could be missing it. I'm doing a quick scan, but I don't see it on the notice that property owners received. It is however, in the DEP bulletin notice.
Okay, that's no problem. It's Vivian, V-I-V-I-A-N dot Finelli, F as in Frank, A-N-E-L-L-I at D-E-P dot N-J dot gov. G-O-V. Hi Veronica.
Hi.
Would you like to speak?
No, no, I was just gonna sit in and listen.
Okay. Someone just previously asked if anyone from the township was going, so.
Yeah, well, I, I got a little delayed, so I apologize.
That's okay. That's okay. I wasn't sure if you were going to join. I believe the speaker is still here. I think I recognize the phone number. So this is Veronica from Lacy Township Administration just joined us.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Would anyone else like to provide comments or speak?
Hi, yes, please. I'm Lauren Giamara. We live at 20 Jackling Court. We were also sent all of the notices. First up, the map that we were sent, it's so tiny, all the writing, that it makes it incredibly difficult to understand anything that's going on in it. I see that around the side and at the back, there is a area where it's got like a crisscross pattern. And I can't, I can barely even make out what it's saying, but is that part of the area they're trying to get rid of?
I just realized I was muted. I apologize. Like I stated to the previous speaker, that if you would like to, I don't have the aerial, I don't have the survey pulled up in front of me. If you would like to email me your formal comment and I can review what your comment and question is and then I can provide a formal response back.
Okay. Can I just confirm your email address after your first dot last name? It's at, is it D-E-P?
Yes.
Dot N-J dot gov. Okay.
Yes, that's correct.
And then we would like to echo one of the previous comments, just that we object to just the entire development going in. Obviously, this is, this is a lot of units that I worked it out. There's like 270 units. That obviously provides a whole bunch of questions such as like the impact on the town and the busyness, the impact on the school district. And yeah, so we just want to put in a formal objection to the whole thing. Like I said, like we echo what the, one of the previous ladies said.
Okay. You can also include that in an email to me. Is, like I mentioned previously, that this is being recorded. So your comments will be made part of the, of the record, but you can also put that statement in writing if you would like, as also in writing.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
Hi, sorry. This is Courtney Summers again. I just had a question. I know that there were some other neighbors that were unable to attend the meeting today because obviously it's 10 o'clock on a workday. I myself was able to take some time.
Can you, can you hold on one second? Can you hold on one second? I'm sorry. Veronica, can you, can you mute your thing?
Sure.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
That's okay. So I guess my question is, if there are going to be more meetings in the future, is there a way to do it maybe a more convenient hour when people aren't at work? So that more people can participate? And then the second part of that question is, I know that there were people that wanted to participate but were unable to. Are they still allowed to submit comments even though they weren't part of this meeting?
Absolutely. Anyone can provide comments. You don't have to be on the call to provide the comments. So you can, unfortunately, we couldn't do it in person because of COVID. So this was our only option at this point to have it, the virtual hearing. So if they weren't able to attend the actual hearing, we can, we still accept their comments and questions.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. That's great to know.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else that would like to comment? Sorry, I feel like I keep repeating myself. Sorry. If there are no other comments or questions, I will provide the closing statement. We appreciate you taking the time to join here today. The information and testimony presented at this hearing must be reviewed by the Division of Land Resource Protection prior to rendering a decision on this request to release the conservation restriction. The record will remain open until September 23rd, 2021.
Vivian, I'm sorry. Can I, I just, before you end the meeting, I do have a question, if it's allowed. I'm sorry. This is Courtney Summers again.
Go ahead.
The, the lady that's on the line for Lacy Township, are they allowed to express or explain what the town stance is on this development?
I'm not going to speak on behalf of the governing body. Obviously, it's been before the Township Planning Board. They had granted it approval in, in the, you know, previous years. So it's up to the planning board as to how they will handle any changes to the site plan and those items. It was granted approval, so obviously you know their stance that, that it fits the zoning. We can't deny it because we don't want it or that it's going to increase the schools. You know, you have to go in accordance with the municipal land you slone. If it meets your zoning and they don't need a ton of variances and stuff to send it to the zoning board, you can't really deny these things.
So I guess my only concern is like, this isn't the first like plan we've received. So has there been, like this is, these plans are different. So I guess my only concern is like, uh, this isn't the first, like, plan we've received. So has there been, like, this is, these plans are different than the last map we got, so.
Right, and they, I do believe they're going to be making application to come back before the Planning Board for the, uh, amended changes that we're discussing today.
Okay, so, so it's, I'm sorry, again, I'm, I'm not, uh, this is not my normal day in, day out, so it's just all very new to me. Um, so does that mean that, like, previous plans were, uh, approved, but the new plans are in the works still, so it still has to come back?
I believe that there will be an amendment that will be coming back before the Planning Board, because I do believe there have been some changes from their initial, um, plans that were approved several years ago.
Okay, so, and you're saying basically that the town, you, like, you guys won't comment on the land that they're basically, because from my understanding from this is that the land, um, they're, they're giving up protected land, and they're saying that they're.
Protected land, how is it protected?
Or deed restricted, I think, was the term that she was using. So if they're giving up that deed restricted land, um, and they're allegedly giving us more land in return in our town, I mean, how is the town, like, is our, is Lacy Township having any comment on that?
Okay, I'm not, I'm not familiar with, um, a deed restriction on that property. Um, I, so I'm not, I'm not familiar with, uh, that being deed restricted, so, um, I can't answer to that. If there's a deed restriction on it, as to what can and can't be done with it, I'm not familiar with that at all. It does comply with what they're building in accordance with the zoning, and what the municipal land use law says. Um, so I'm not familiar, like I said, with a deed restriction on there. What was the deed restriction for, do you know?
Did, uh, I'm, this is Vivian, the deed restriction was something that was imposed on, be, as a result of a CAFRA permit. So I don't know that the township would have any, the township wouldn't really have any involvement. This is, um, a DEP issue with the deed restrictions. The township is just looking at it as far as, I don't want to speak on behalf of the township, but they're looking at zoning, the use of the property, and making sure it meets all their local requirements. The deed restriction and the permitting were a DEP requirement, so the township wouldn't really have any involvement in that. This is, this is all pertaining to a DEP requirements.
Okay, so my understanding is more that DEP, it's, it's your discretion to protect that land and/or the exchange of it and everything else, not necessarily the town. Is that correct?
No, the township wouldn't have any involvement in that. It's, it's our deed restriction that was imposed, and it's our review and decision that would lift, potentially lift anything that's not at the township level.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. There's a hand raised. Go ahead, the guests can speak.
Hi, it's Helen Henderson on Camelot Court. Um, can you clarify for me, the township can or cannot weigh in on this proposed deed restriction?
They can comment, but it's ultimately our decision if we approve the partial release. It, this would go up to the commissioner level, but it's, they are, the township is more than welcome to comment, but it's ultimately the DEP's decision.
Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome. Any other comments? I would like to reiterate that the record will remain open until September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one, which is fifteen days after today. As such, should you think of additional comments or concerns after the close of this hearing, you may submit your comments in writing by Thurs, by September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one, via email at vivian.finelli@dep.nj.gov. Thank you for attending. This hearing is now closed. Have a good day.
Thank you Vivian.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.